Stay tuned for a meeting of the City of Calabasas Commission. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Commission members may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasus.com/CTVlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name in the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the commission from meeting, or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular commission meeting. Any other agenda items the commission has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the City of Calabasas Commission.
All right, so welcome to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting of April 6, 2020. And I will call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Can I get a roll call of the commissioners, please? Carol?
Carol Stephan here.
Mark?
Mark Silverman here.
And Michael?
Michael Human here.
And myself, Lynn Tracy. Thank you all. So next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead it tonight. Please do not stand, so everyone would place their hand over their heart. Ready, begin. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next we move on to the agenda for this evening. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motion? I didn't catch that.
I did, Michael.
Michael.
Michael, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to announcements, introductions from commissioners. Excuse me, I'd like to start out and just acknowledge that, excuse me, that our longtime Commissioner Judy Jordan is no longer on the commission. We've lost a great resource to this commission. For those that don't know, Judy was involved for many, many years on the Historical Society for Calabasas and on this commission, I believe, from the inception of it. She was so knowledgeable and brought a lot to all of our conversations, and she will be missed. So I just wanted to thank her and acknowledge her for her years of service to the city. Any other commissioners? Yes, Tom?
I'll defer to the commissioners first, but I do have something to add on that.
Okay, any other announcements or anything, any of the commissioners? We'll talk about Michael's introduction shortly, but yes, Mark?
I think Judy was on the school board too, I think, for Los Virginny Schools.
She probably was.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, I bet Judy then, she is going to be recognized next week by the city council. So a week from tonight, and that'll be at the beginning of the meeting. So I just wanted all of you to know, if you wanted to tune in, I wouldn't be surprised that the council members would invite members of the commission to contribute whatever comments you would want to make as part of that presentation and honoring that they're going to do for her. We did try to see if she could log in for this meeting as well, so that any of you would be able to talk to her directly through the Zoom, magic of Zoom, but unfortunately, she had a conflict.
Okay, thank you, Tom, for letting us know. Okay, do we have any requests for public comment out there? Teal?
I don't see any, not at this time.
Okay, great. All right, so we move on to the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from Mark or Carol since you were at the meeting? And Michael was not, so he can't participate in this?
I'll move.
Okay, Carol, I assume you second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so minutes are approved, and now to new business. So we want to welcome our newest commissioner, Michael. Is it Human? Is that?
Human, yes.
Okay, welcome, Michael, to join us. We look forward to working with you. Do you want to take a couple minutes, couple seconds, minutes, minute or so, and just tell us why you wanted to come on the commission and just a little bit about yourself, so the community knows a little bit about you?
Sure, my wife and I have lived in Calabasas since 1989 in the same home here in, on Rencrest. And I've been interested in history my whole life and very much the history of the west and of California. I've been a trustee starting in 1989 of the Southwest Museum, and then I was president of that board for eight years, and then we merged with the Autry Museum. So I'm a trustee at the Autry. I'm also involved with, on the board of the Ethnic Arts Council and the California Art Club, and I chair the art committee at the California Club. I think you can see history and culture and art have been a part of my life for a long time. I'm a collector of Native American Indian art. In fact, I'll share one piece very briefly. This is a, probably a Chumash Indian wall, probably about 200 years old. It leads into a theme I'd like to bring to the, to the committee. And my current work, I've been a business litigator for about 40 some years, and I managed a law firm for six years, Nosman Downtown. It's a national law firm. And when I stopped doing that, I said, what I want to do next? And the answer is, I want to go full-time into the work I enjoyed the most, which was to be an art attorney and art advisor, and that's what I do now.
Great, thank you. And I see the indigenous, the beautiful stained glass of the indigenous woman behind you, which is gorgeous.
Thank you. That's a Hopi woman by an artist named Ramsun Lomatewama. And she is a maiden, you can tell that by the hair rolls, coming out from the third world into our world, the fourth world, through a sipapu.
Thank you for that. Wonderful, okay.
Just one thing to add about our newest commissioner, I just want all of you to know that you all, of course, got notebooks with a lot of background material, both an electronic copy and hard copy, for those of you that wanted that. We have provided all the materials to Commissioner Human. So it's up to him to read all that, and we'll give him a quiz next week.
Next reading, yes.
Okay.
All right, okay. On to item two is the reorganization. So it's that time to decide on a new chair and vice chair, correct, Tom?
That's correct. So you would just want to invite nominations, obviously a second, and go through the usual process of electing a chair.
Okay.
And vice chair.
All right. I, you know, if I'm, am I able as chair to nominate?
I think so. I don't know why not. You might invite your colleagues first. I don't know, it's up to you.
Anybody want to nominate anybody?
I nominate Tom.
All right, I nominate Carol if she's willing to do it. She's now been on the commission for two years, Carol, is it?
Yeah, I think so about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Lynn, you would be a very hard act to follow.
Yeah.
And a good teacher. And, and I would accept if you will provide some assistance when I need it to understand, you know, the operations of how to do this as, as you have done.
I'll be glad to. Can I get a second on Carol?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael. All right, all in favor?
Well, hold on, I would, I would invite you.
To ask for any other nominations? Yeah, well, they weren't coming strong, so I figured I could move on. Any other nominations?
Just to be fair. Okay.
Once, twice, all right. So all in favor of Carol taking over as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays, any abstentions, no, so it carries. Congratulations, Carol.
I think yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so in terms of vice chair, same process, nominations?
Sure.
Tom again?
Well, I would, I would not.
I respectfully decline.
Can I nominate Mark?
Absolutely, you nominate who you like.
I'll second. Any other nominations? We're kind of a small, thin group here, Tom, there's not much.
I realize, and you don't have your fifth member. But I still think it's appropriate to go and reorganize because your fifth member would have been able to vote, but it would have been unlikely that a brand-new appointee at his or her first meeting would have been put in the chair, vice chair role, so go ahead and vote.
All right, so all in favor of Mark being vice chair, say aye. Aye. Any opposition, any abstention, no. So, all right, guys, welcome.
So I would suggest at this point, because you've actually now decided on your chair and vice chair, that if Carol as chair, she could either take hold of the meeting and run the rest of the way, or if she prefers, she can ask you to finish out and she'll do it the next meeting, but that's her call.
Right.
Well, there's no time like the present to jump in the deep end, right?
I guess. It's a deep end of about three feet, just be careful.
Yes, I don't have to worry about those swimming lessons. Okay, well, I'll just do it because it's, it's a good practice anyway. So I guess we're, are we done with the reorg?
We are.
The one, the one thing I'd ask about this, and I don't know what Lynn has done in the past, but ahead of the meetings, do you get together with Tom and the vice chair to go over what is going to be talked about and planned?
That's a great question. Lynn, you want to take it first?
Yeah, I do not. Staff, Tom puts together the agenda. Like all the rest of you, I read the agenda, I read everything so that I don't stumble over it, hopefully. And I do not do that, no.
On the other hand.
Yeah, Tom, you would.
And this is only because perhaps what I'm about to describe hasn't really happened of late. When we know we've got a more complex item that's coming to the commission, we as staff will take, initiate a short conference with the chair ahead of the meeting to cover any potential entanglements, oddities in terms of how the meeting might have to be run. If we, for example, were to expect a large number of members of the public to turn out, we would cover that. So it can happen, but it's, it's rare.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. And just, just so you know, Carol, I'm always, you know, in the back of my head, the, the, it's not a problem talking to staff, obviously, but I don't think it's come up in the time I've been on the commission to see where, as Tom's suggesting, that might occur. But also, I'm just always so cautious in the back of my head about the Brown Act and
Oh, yeah.
Talking amongst commissioners more than one at a time and things like that.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah, so that's, that's just how I've done it, you know? But that's up to the chair to decide, and if there's something, you know, obviously, staff's always open and available. We've been chatting about Judy, just so you know, Tom and I, back and forth a little bit. So, yeah, I think that's, that's up to you, but in terms of preparing for the meeting, I just read it and go.
Okay, great.
And by the way, in that same vein, just for everybody's benefit, I'm always available to be contacted if you have a question about any items coming before you. And it's always better if you've got something in your mind you're wondering about to just contact us ahead of the meeting. And then hopefully we can get that figured out, then there might not, we could prevent something that's, you know, would come across in an unfavorable way in an open meeting. Okay?
Yeah, perfect, okay. Well, I guess under new business, then, we're at item four, which is Certified Local Government Program Annual Report, and.
Teal, yeah.
Go ahead.
Teal's gonna deliver the presentation. I'm just gonna tee it up by telling you all, and it's a reminder for everybody but Michael, who's new, so listen up, Michael. As a certified local government, we do have to do this annual report at this time of year, every year, hence the name annual. So Teal's going to describe it, and if anybody has a question, especially you, Michael, considering this is a little new to you, don't be bashful, ask away, okay?
All right, give me two seconds.
She's gonna share her screen.
I'm gonna share my screen. Just be aware, if my voice cuts out for any period of time, I will go back and repeat it. My internet connection, it seems strong, and then all of a sudden, there might be a little blip. So just let me know when that happens, and I will more than happy to repeat myself. Okay, so give me two seconds. All right. Here we go. Okay, so some of you are veterans with this presentation. As we, as us veterans know, we are certified local government. We're part of that program. So on the right-hand side here, you'll see that we have this resolution of recognition. This was given to us once we achieved our eligibility for certified local government. And we included the photo, this is the actual document. We included for you guys to kind of take a look at what you would receive as one, as a certified local government. So what we're going to be going over today is our annual report that's due every year. The reporting period is October to September, and we're going to be going over 2020 to 2021, which is going to be due here in April. So let's start. Okay, so a little bit of background for you guys. The Certified Local Government Program was created by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. The program is in partnership with the California Office of Historic Preservation and the National Park Service. In the report that you guys received, at the very end, there is a section that talks about additional information for the National Park Service. That is what this is in reference to. It's a very small section, and it used to be a separate report that we would do, but they have, within the recent years, consolidated it into one format. So it's been really nice. The purpose of the Certified Local Government is to encourage local government participation in identification, evaluation, registration, and preservation interests and concerns. So it brings a larger program to a smaller scale. It allows us a little bit more responsibility as a government. And let's talk a little bit about Calabasas. So in 2009, 2009, we were established as a CLG. And currently, we have seven designated, designated historic properties or resources, and 16 eligible. Okay, what does CLG mean for HPC? As a certified local government for HPC, it empowers Calabasas with a certain amount of responsibilities and authority under federal and state laws governing the protection of historic resources. It gives us a little bit more of an enforcement power as a city, rather than taking it higher up. Another thing that it means for us is it helps to ensure that we can properly carry out our obligations and duties as a CLG. So every year, the members of the, of the city's Historic Preservation Commission are required to receive a couple hours of training as one of the minimum requirements, and education on history, preservation law that are applicable to some of the preservation rules and guidelines, how to achieve that, what kind of architecture to look at, and all things that have to do with preservation as a whole when it comes to properties, resources, landscapes, everything. It kind of helps to ensure that we can do that. Project review. Okay, so you guys might find this one a familiar slide because it's from one of Tom's training modules. As a CLG, the commission's responsibility falls under the following. So we use the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines as a basis for review of a historic resource or project. That's kind of like our end-all, and I'm sorry, I'm just kind of making the screen of you guys a little smaller so I can see the whole slide. That is our main basis for reviewing projects that come to us, come forward. Reviewers, such as the commission, must consider the most appropriate treatment for the subject resource. So there's a few different categories and components that need to be reviewed, and they're all broken out in the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, which is included in your guys' binder if you ever have the, if we ever have the need to look at it for a particular project review. Okay, so you guys all should have received a copy of the sort of, the CLG annual report. It was kind of a hefty document. It had all of its finished items within it, so usually you're used to seeing just the form. But this year, we included the completed package, which includes all the dividers, the title sheets, the resumes, everything. So in the form, though, the one that we look at every year, the CLG-formatted form, it's broken up into certain sections. Now, I've summarized the sections here on this slide to kind of give you a summary of what each section means and what we're reporting on for the calendar year that they're asking for, which is 2020 to 2021. The, and each section represents how we're complying with the minimum requirements as a CLG. So Section 1, Local Legislation for Designation and Protection of Historic Properties. Section 2, Historic Preservation Commission Members and Staff Qualifications Review. You'll have seen these, these, I'm just gonna take a pause. You'll have seen these items depicted as tables. You'll have seen them as depicted as little text blocks that we write in as a answer to a question. Section 3, Survey and Inventory of Properties. We have not had a recent resurvey. We had our original survey done in 2009. I have to look back to see what the year was on that. But because we didn't have anything to report on that, we do actually say we had a survey and we have X amount of designated landmarks and/or historic resources. Okay, so Section 4, Public Participation in Local Historic Preservation Program. You'll have seen that in a table. It is the table that talks about the training modules that Tom did. It also talks about the policy and procedures for markers and monuments. And I think the last thing was, I can't remember, but those are, those are the three items that I can remember from that section. Okay, so Section 5, we've already kind of talked about this, we've brushed on it a little bit. Additional Information for National Park Service. It's a very small section. It talks about if we had any additional policies that came out. And then the sixth section is kind of a CLG's opportunity to give Chippewa some feedback. So every year is a little bit different in this section of the report. This is usually the section where we talk about our goals. However, they, they removed that this year. And so this year, it just, they just wanted to know about the camp program, which was a training that we had brushed on a couple meetings ago. I think that Tom will bring up training yet again at the end possibly, but because training is always the number one topic on these meetings. And then the final item are attachments, and you'll have seen that in the completed packet. That includes the resumes, which I've already brushed on, the meeting minutes of that reporting period, and any publications. So I included the training modules and the policy and procedures for public monuments. Goals, okay. This, this slide will also be familiar for us veterans because we went through this not that long ago. These were the goals that we established for the calendar year, or I'm sorry, the fiscal year that we're talking about. So you'll see here, these are the items that we were hoping to get done between October and September of the previous year, which was the reporting period. The first one, conduct an update to the Historic Resource Survey on the previously deemed eligible properties. The second one, perform a condition assessment on currently listed mass and house, structure and research potential grant funding in preparation for future renovations. Third was prepare nomination documents for consideration of Warner Ranch. And then the third one was conduct unappropriateness reviews as necessary. So, Tom, I do think we should brush on these a little bit.
Okay.
Um, so as far as.
Shall I jump in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so as you guys know, number one, we've been hoping to get that going. We did do outreach to universities who have historic preservation curriculum to see if we could get some voluntary resources through, say, graduate students who have to do projects for credit anyway. Something I did, by the way, when I was in graduate school, was to do exactly this. So we were hoping to get that done. We got close with one professor at one university. Actually, had some dialogue, looked like we might get there, but that fell through. So unfortunately, we were unable to achieve number one. We didn't have something on our budget to do that. So we'll see what happens with the council's new budget coming forward. And we'll revisit this if, if we can. We definitely think it's reasonable, appropriate, and we're gonna bring that back up as part of the next agenda item. On the condition of the Mastin House and preparing to do some renovation work on that, Teal and I have been working hard on that. We've got a new proposal updated from the firm that did the, the assessment from more than 10 years ago. And that firm, based on that, we're hoping we're gonna be able to get a contract prepared and get them started. we're hoping we're going to be able to get a, a contract prepared and get them started on it. The first thing we're trying to do is to see if we can get a commitment of funds under the current budget that for the fiscal year that ends June 30. So if there's some underspending that would give a funding option just through that, we'll be able to proceed a little sooner. Otherwise, we're going to try to, of course, get this in the fiscal year 2022 dash 2023 budget. That is going to cost in our estimation, just for this work, about 10 to 12,000, I think. And then judging from the assessment they did 10 or 12 years ago, it wouldn't surprise me that their conclusions for the actual rehab work will be around 300K, if not more. Because there's so much that has to be done to, to truly make this building rock solid and consistent with the guidelines. It wouldn't look, for example, any different than what you see in that photograph. Materials, et cetera, as you commissioners know from your trainings, would have to be consistent. And that way you're able to preserve the integrity of the structure and yet allow it to be used in a, in an adaptive and appropriate way, which will also be a factor in getting the work done. Office use is what we're anticipating. It's used in support of Headwaters Corner. So we are making progress there. But it's more behind the scenes than in a reportable milestone fashion for this report. Then number three, in terms of actually getting something done, we've had a couple of meetings with the property owner and a representative of the property owner to initiate the dialogue to move that along. As the commissioners may remember, when we would attempt to pursue a nomination on a privately owned property, where the first thing you have to do is confer with the property owner because every preference is that you have the property owner's support for a nomination and designation. If you don't have the property owner's support, and I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance we have. I know that it requires a minimum of a four fifths vote. It may even require an unanimous vote to override that. And I'll just use a small P politically adjective here. It may not be the best thing to do because you prefer to have the property owner's blessing. So that is the first and most important part. And we're still really having to continue that dialogue before we build more forward. So that again, is not really at a milestone reporting standpoint. So it's like our, our report is really threadbare going to the state. And then the appropriation reviews have to do with projects as they would come forward. We can't just create projects. It's when somebody proposes something that affects a resource. And we really haven't had any that have come through. We have had something that came close to maybe affecting the Kramer Store, one of the eligible resources. But as the Historic Preservation Officer, what I tried to do on the front end before we'd even have to involve the commission is ask questions with the staff that have the project and also through the staff or even by getting involved directly, working with the property owner applicant to see if we can't change the project in some way. So there is no impact on the resource. And if I achieve that, then of course, there's nothing to have to bring to the commission. I've been able to do that twice now. So unfortunately, it looks like you haven't done anything, but your Historic Preservation Officer, your staff support person has done some work that I should do so that we don't necessarily have to consider making any kind of project possibly compromise or have to mitigate what's better is to not have an impact at all. And so I've done that. And that becomes another thing that it's work that was done. It was successful, but it's not really reportable. So I did want to mention that we've been busy on all this, but it's going to look like we didn't have much to report or nothing got done at all, but it's not entirely true. How's that, Teal?
Excellent.
Okay.
I did want to mention that these photos here on the right were taken last year. So they're very recent. The designated mass and houses on the top, I believe Tom already mentioned that. And then the Warner Ranch, which is the National Velvet Barn, which was used for filming and motion picture is on the bottom right hand side. And just to reiterate, it is eligible. And it would, and it's going to again be referenced in my next presentation. So we'll just move on.
Okay, so, so now what we'll do is invite questions from the members of commission about the report.
Well, that was an excellent
Madam Chair.
I have to say
You're in charge.
Yes, it was an excellent presentation by both of you. And it's, it's interesting to see what's happened with their goals. And like everything else, a lot of things in life, it's slow, but as long as you make progress, you're, you know, you have a better chance of getting to where you want to go. And we've got, I know that we're going to talk about this, you know, coming up. It's number five in the next item. But we've got a lot of potential historic landmarks in our city. And it's exciting just to kind of look at them and try to move them into the realm we'd like them in, I think. Anybody else?
I saw a hand raised by, was it Mark?
I was just curious, who owns the property that the, the Masson House is on?
You're looking at, why not me individually? But I represent, I represent the city of Calabasas. That's who owns it.
Oh, okay.
That is why Teal and I are becoming a bit of a, what do you call it? The squeaky door or this
Squeaky wheel.
Squeaky wheel. So we're trying to make sure we get some oil here because we're keenly aware of another aspect of historic preservation law, which is that a governmental entity that is the owner, especially where we are the CLG as well, that owns a resource, has an obligation to maintain that resource. Okay. So when we're aware that that resource has deteriorated to a point where we have some concern, we firmly believe we need to get something done consistent with our obligation. So Teal and I continue to remind the higher ups that, hey, we really need to do this. And here's why. And so that's why we're really pushing to make sure this initial analysis, which is like, if you've ever had a home inspection done prior to buying it, just think of that on mega steroids.
Wow.
And specific to basically all of the mortar, everything. Because you're looking at historic resource and it has to be, the idea is you have to rebuild it consistent with the materials and the construction style and everything particular to the exterior in this case, because that's the only contributing part. That's where the historic value is vested. The interior has been so compromised over the years that that is non-contributing. And so we can completely refurbish that consistent with current code in terms of, for example, wiring, plumbing, structural and disabled accessibility, on and on. And that is what we'll do, of course, so that we can create within that space a truly serviceable office environment to support the Headwaters Corner property. Does everybody know what the Headwaters Corner property is? Anybody doesn't? Raise your hand. Okay, everybody does. So the Mastin House is on one of the lots that comprise that. The city owns all of it, but we have a contract with a third party who does the resource management, operational programming, sort of for the Headwaters Corner. And we're conferring with that entity about their administrative needs so that the, the idea is they will occupy the office space as a tenant after we would get all the work done. So that's basically the concept and plan. And you can see that when you put those pieces together, that's not going to be an inexpensive enterprise.
So Tom, I, I know probably not this meeting, but it'd be interesting to hear what is going on on the other part, the adjacent Headwaters Corner part, and how they would be integrated together. I mean, there's, I think that it might include parking if I'm not mistaken, but it'd be interesting, maybe not this meeting, but to hear how that would all flow together.
Yeah. Because, and because we've got a new member, I'm going to go ahead and use this as a perfect opportunity to not only answer your question, but use it as a, an example of how to run a meeting and what we can and cannot do under the, under the Brown Act and that sort of thing. So Carol's asked a really good question. It is perfectly reasonable for us to put that on sort of a sideline to bring up at the end as a possible future agenda item. Among yourselves, we can't discuss it because it's not an agendized item for this meeting. So, but what I can do is I can answer the question as posed and then any, anything we, if, if the commission really would like to have a more of robust discussion on the topic, we'll just put that on the next meeting agenda. So the short answer is there's planning going on that is broad brushed into which the Mastin House is a component that they're basically leaving to us appropriately. And so that's a puzzle piece that they've already set aside. They know, you know, it's fits right in there in terms of the property and we're, we've already advised them what we're doing. Now, when I talk about them, that is a board that oversees Headwaters Corner. It's a board that includes two of our city council members and three others who are representing different entities. I think the, maybe the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy is a member. I don't remember the other three members, to be honest. But that board is the general oversight and then the third party entity reports to them and the city staff is a, an individual, Michael McConville, who reports directly to the city manager. Okay, so organizationally, it's pretty much like that. And because you have the, not the Woolsey Fire, the fire that preceded it, was it the Old Fire? I can't remember the name of that one two years earlier. That, that's what destroyed the other home that was on there that had served as office space for the previous, what was called MRT. That was our third party contract entity. And they've been basically blended with tree people. So that's, I don't know what to call them really now, but some people refer to them as tree, tree people, and some still refer to them as MRT, but they occupied that other building that no longer exists. So they're providing really the, I don't want to call it the feet on the ground and in the trenches work to develop this new plan for utilizing the property. So when we get an idea about when the next board meeting is and what their agenda is, we can certainly forward it to the commission and start with that. And we'll bring this back up when you talk about future agenda items and see if you want it on your agenda for next meeting. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Teal.
One, one, one final thing I want to talk about before Lynn, I saw her hand go up too. I do, if you guys do see errors with the report, please don't hesitate to let me know within the next week so that I can modify them because I will be sending the reports out shortly.
What's the deadline?
We'll say Friday of this next week.
A week from this Friday, then?
Yes, correct.
That's the It'd be by the, no later than the 15th. So do your taxes and then, no, tell her what the problems are, then do your taxes.
All righty. And I know you had a question.
Can I ask a question? Yeah. Tom, I'm just curious, when we don't meet those goals, what is the aftermath of not having that occur?
Teal and I get called up to Sacramento. We have to report previously, and this is what Teal pointed out, is the goals aspect, they seem to be winnowing off of their report. We don't know why. It could be because they're CLGs, which doesn't surprise me, are so variable from smaller entities like ourselves to City of Los Angeles. And when you think about how the reports are different and you think about goals for an entity as large as City of Los Angeles and with however many districts they have and resources versus ours, it, that by itself may be why they've winnowed that out and they're going to address that one-on-one with CLGs that have, you know, require more technical assistance from the state. So they haven't really ever emphasized much in terms of, well, you didn't meet this or meet that. They just want us to keep them informed on what we're anticipating to do, where we've met milestones that we've set for ourselves. They don't ever set any goals for us. The main thing that the state wants to know for a certified local government is that we're doing the fundamental parts of our job correctly, which includes following the rules. I'll just call it the rules that Teal already summarized and I summarized in great detail in the modules last year. And that, number two, we're maintaining a training level sufficient to do that. Those are really the two most important things the state cares about. And we definitely report on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other questions about the report? All right. Well, thank you. Madam Chair.
Okay. So we'll move right along to the presentation on eligible historic properties.
All righty. Give me two seconds to
Let's just run through them in a summary fashion, Teal. And if any of the members have questions on particular ones, that's when we can delve into any details that might be relevant and necessary. Because all of the information that is more particular to every one of these is in your binder.
Yes, it's, it's included in your binder under section three.
Right. So I want to presume a bit of knowledge and understanding on the part of the commissioners already because they've been provided this information. I know that Teal and myself basically wanted to include all these, at least with some photos, names, the general idea of these are out there and what it means for the benefit of the public as much, if not more than for the benefit of the commissioners. All right. So go ahead, Teal.
Okay. All right. So let's talk about some eligible properties. So on the right hand side here, you can see a historic photo of the Kramer Store back in the day. So this is the same store that you see in Old Town. I can't think of who the tenant is in there right now, but it is a light blue and white building in Old Town at the corner of Calabasas and El Cannon. So I'm sure you guys have seen this building. All right, let's talk about historic survey designations. There are three distinct levels of designation. The first one, the higher, the highest form is the federal program or the national register. Then there's the state program, which there's three different subsections of being a state level designation. As you can see here, there is resource landmark and point of interest. So they have three different categories. And then the smallest level is local programs. So these are specific to our city. So the city of Calabasas has seven designated historic landmarks or resources. What makes the resource eligible? Now I say resource because it's not always a property. It can be a property, but it can also be landscaping. It can be, it can be a dwelling. It can be a business. It can be a structure. It can be an item, a place, tons of things. So we, we like to refer to them as resources. Historic resource surveys are performed Um, historic resource surveys are performed to identify, record and evaluate historic properties within an area. A historic resource can be a district, building, site, structure or object, what I just highlighted. Um, this object or resource has to exemplify a period of history. It has to associate with a significant historic event. Um, it can be associated with the lives of a person significant to Calabasas in the past. Um, it has to embody a particular architectural style, type or method of construction. And or it has to yield information important to history or prehistory within an area. So on the right-hand side here, I gave you kind of two different examples of, um, buildings. These are not within the city. These are just images that I found, um, to kind of give you a varying degree of his, um, architectural style versus on the picture below, um, a historical event maybe, or, um, a period of history.
Okay, Teal, before you move on to this slide, if you go back to that one for a minute. One thing that's not noted there in those bullets is, um, compromised condition. So I just wanna point out that you could have a resource that otherwise you'd have a check in the box in one of these or several of these. But if that resource has been so compromised through alterations over the years, uh, perhaps also having been relocated to another location, whatever. It could have those, you know, meet those at, at least on paper, if you will, but it may not really be eligible anymore because of the compromise. So I just wanna point that out.
All right. Okay, let's go, let's zoom into Calabasas here. So some background, here is our list of eligible properties. Um, we have sixteen of them here. Um, as you can see on the map on the right-hand side, I have numbered them and kind of given them a little bit more space. You can see them a little bit better. Um, let's go and see the photos of these places. Okay, these are basically in alphabetical order. I mean, uh, clearly not now, but um, so on the left-hand side here, you see Andy Anderson's house. This is one of the, um, locations that is eligible for national register, which we had seen on the second slide. That's the federal program. So I thought it was worth noting here that the survey found that this project has an eligibility for national register. Now, again, it's a private property like Tom highlighted before. So a majority of these places are going to be private property. So there's a due process for that as well. And I'm just gonna kind of float through these because the majority of them are, again, just photos. Um, you'll notice some of these photos are not really easily seen and that's has to do with brush. You couldn't, can't go on the property itself, so has to be taken from the street. So we'll just see what we have here. And here is the Kramer Store. And as you can see, it has a lot of the features that you have seen on the first slide here. So I thought it was kind of neat to include this photo. Um, I think it's really exciting that we have these photos to compare together. Um, and I wanted to kind of give you guys a little bit of a visual of the integrity of the structure as well.
Yeah, so keep that up there for a minute. Um, as a somewhat sideline, but certainly focused on the photos and changes over time specific to a historic resource, note in particular the balcony at the second floor from the photo at the right in the past and the photo on the left. And you had the balcony supported by the wooden posts. That's still true today. The wooden posts, of course, obscured by some vines now, but they're still there. And the key difference is this railing. Now, it's still a wood style railing, but now it's taller and of course the slats, there are more of them and they're closely spaced. Um, for safety purposes under the building code, the railing at the left is necessary to comply. If we were to be pure to the style, of course, the railing would still look like it does on the right. Um, so there's a compromise, if you will, there. The rules under historic preservation for building code compliance are a little different and they're more flexible than when they're applied to any other property. Um, so it's possible that at some future date, the railing on the left might be able to be done differently so that it doesn't quite look that different and still accomplishes the fundamental goal of public safety, uh, better than the style of the right. Um, I'd have to do a comparison of the code to see exactly how that might be done, but I just wanna point that out because those kind of issues can and will come up with properties over time.
Yes, and, uh, so you'll see that I did put an edit in here. So the survey identified the property as two, five, three, zero, eight, Calabasas. Now, the weird part about this is that this particular building sits on a parcel that it's shared with a few other buildings. So, um, just to make things a little easier with identifying which of those structures it is on that one parcel, I, um, identified it as two, three, five, zero, four, which you can see clearly from the front of the building there. Um, I think that I'm gonna modify the list and just put it as that with a disclaimer that the survey referenced it as two, five, three, zero, eight. So just as kind of, um, uh, uh, circling back to that. Okay, so this is the teacher's residence. This is also in Old Town on Calabasas Road. And Tom and I did some digging on this particular one. And as you can see from the left-hand side, this was, um, originally occupied by Bernard's Wine Gallery. Um, and it is now under renovation, um, currently under renovation. And behind it on the left-hand photo, you can see, I don't know how clearly you can see this, but at the very back of that building, you can see some red coloring, which is the
First sort of pointed out.
Oh, thank you. So back here, you'll see some red striping. There's a little white building. That's this little red striping here. So this is an accessory structure behind this teacher's residence. So, um, the survey documents, as you read through them, you'll see that it does identify two separate structures. It identifies the teach, oops, sorry. The teacher's residence and the accessory structure behind. So it's, it's very important to read through that and kind of look through those things.
Now, um, there is a photo of the teacher's residence when it actually exhibited its, uh, pre-modification residential characteristics in a book. And I don't remember which book. Do you remember which one it was? The History of Calabasas book, Teal?
Yes.
Yeah, so if, and if you have that, you can look through that and you'll find the photo of this structure when it in the style it was as a residence. And you have to kind of squint your eyes or something to recognize that this is still the same structure. It's been highly modified. Um, yet there's still a few things that you recognize carry over from that. So I'll just point out the one that when you look at these four columns, each of them having a brick base to them at the bottom. When you see the old photo, you're going to see the four of those with those brick bases. But the columns that were in place were shorter, supporting a roof elevation. It was, um, a straight gable like that. And yet it was shorter. And in the style it was, which I think was Craftsman, this almost takes on a neoclassical look. But so it's almost, almost to the, to the average person, it's, I would say it's impossible to recognize that this is the same building. But it is, at least parts of it. Um, but it gives you an example of one that's been highly modified and yet it is recognized clearly not so much for the architecture, but because, um, of the historical value, cause this is a long time. It was a residence for a long time teacher who was, um, specific to this area and taught at the old schoolhouse. Okay.
Alright. Alright, so you'll see here some of the other residents for the different time periods. Um, as you can see on the right-hand side, it is almost impossible to get some of these photos to kind of show you what makes it eligible. Um, in the write-ups, you'll notice that some of the eligible properties don't have photos to go with their write-ups. Um, it is because of these situations where it's, it's very difficult to get a photo of the actual front of the house. So just bear with me on this one. Okay, on the left-hand side, you see the, um, the infamous Pump House, which is on Hummingbird Road. And I believe it shares a property line with, is it AW Wright? What's the school behind it?
Calabasas High School.
Calabasas High School, um, and it is in the Art Deco style, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. On the photo on the right-hand side here, Summit Drive. You'll see this
Let's back up. Can you back up one, please? Now, the property in the right, which is on Lost Virginus, this is a California ranch style. And it is next door to, or perhaps one property away from the other California ranch style structure you're gonna see on the left side of the next slide. So I just wanted to point that out, that these two properties are proximate to one another. And they also, I can't remember if they were actually constructed by members of the same family, but they certainly were, uh, inhabited by members of the same family for many, many years, if not decades. And that's the Potapadin family. Um, so there's um, possi, I mean, it, we, these are perfect to resurvey to figure out just what significance, both in terms of architecture, characteristic of that style. Um, and build quality, that sort of thing, as well as possible history in terms of the inhabitants, the family and their presence in this part of, um, the Cano Valley and Western San Fernando Valley, can, Calabasas generally. So I just wanted to point that out. This one and the one on the left on the next slide are related geographically and historically, okay? And style, same style.
Yes, they have sprawling lots, really nice. Lots of property. Um, okay, so with that, um, I wanna move focus on to the Summit Drive on the right-hand side here. And as you can see, there's a clear line on the roof here between the previously historic building and the addition on the right-hand side. Both in color and material, it's very clear. You'll see, um, what's left of the original on the left-hand side in the red circle.
Right.
And then, um, the gut, there's a, I believe a metal gutter that divides the two structures, but it is the same property.
Yeah, so
Consider the same residence.
The thing I'd like to point out about this one is this is up in Calabasas Highlands. Calabasas Highlands has two, um, sections by track map. One of the tracks was filed in and recorded in nineteen twenty-six, I believe, and the other one in nineteen twenty-nine. Calabasas Highlands was, uh, it's what we call an antiquated subdivision in, in terms of our references today from a zoning and stand, planning standpoint. And that is making reference back to the fact that it was subdivided um, before the subdivision map act had, uh, been improved to the point that it protected against certain types of land divisions that were problematic. Calabasas Highlands, if you're not familiar with it, is exceptionally small. Lots on a series of roadways that in some ways somewhat respect the topography, but in other ways don't with some grid pattern that is completely inconsistent with the landscape. And roads that are, um, not at all up to present-day standards. And no, of course, curbs or gutters, sidewalks, that type of thing. The subdivision was created really for what were called cabin lots. Hence their small size and of course you'd have cabins, which is what this was. So if any of you are scratching your head thinking, why on earth did anybody have such a small house? The original use was not a long-term, a, uh, permanent residence. These were intended to be weekend outposts, um, sort of, uh, vacation spots for individuals in the city of Los Angeles because the automobile had reached a point where people would, and the roads had improved to the point where people would go out for weekend getaways. And this was, the Calabasas Highlands was developed originally for that purpose. So this is one of those cabins.
Yeah, you can see it really clearly too.
Yeah, good example.
Alright. Ah, and here's our favorite, the Warner Barn National Velvet. Um, just to reiterate, this was um, a motion picture filming barn for National Velvet back with Elizabeth Taylor. Um, as you can see, there's been quite extensive, um, disrepair going on. Um, so forty-five fifteen Park and Trotta includes the whole golf course. It's not the address for only this barn. It's for the clubhouse and the course itself. This barn is an accessory structure on that address. So, um, I thought you guys might wanna see some photos of it.
Now, we did show photos to the members of the commission at one of the meetings last year, so that we could share with them what we saw when we did our site visit with the property owner. And you may even remember, we had a photo of a, uh, an owl.
Yeah, it was, it was roosting like right up in here.
It's a fascinating property and, um, yeah, we covered more detail at that meeting.
I'm sure we'll cover it again. Alright, and this is our final listing, our eligible listing, I apologize, eligible. Make that very clear. Um, one Batista Deanza Trail and it extends from Calabasas Road all the way to Lost Virginus.
Use your cursor to point that out, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, Calabasas Road, there's a cul-de-sac here, which you can see right at the bottom of this photo is some street pavement. Um, that's this entrance on this side. And then the end of the trail is right back here. Um, it's at the back of the Cambria Hotel in that area over there on Lost Virginus.
Yeah, now the precise location of the one Batista Deanza Trail is difficult to truly, uh, discern and map to say this is exactly where it was. There are some places that's more, uh, possible and other places where it's less possible. By and large, um, the trail as it was evolved into one that was more heavily used by the increased population that included not only uh, native Tumash and the, um, the Spanish explorers and missionary, mission, um, missionary people, but then other inhabitants as California was settled by more individuals and families. And then it became a roadway. First by non-motorized transportation and then on and on. The Ventura Highway, the two-lane road that was originally the connection east-west out of Los Angeles to places west and north actually went a little bit along the same line as the freeway you see there, but actually many parts of it followed what is depicted here as the trail. And the freeway was built in a far more obviously graded and less, uh, curvilinear fashion north of it. So parts of that trail you see they're mapped in purple also indicate where the old Ventura Highway was. But then when you get closer to Lost Virginus, for example, where exactly the trail went is probably more like underneath the freeway and winding back and forth to north. is probably more like underneath the freeway and winding back and forth to north and south of it along the creek that you see there with the green vegetation. Yeah, and then go north of it there, for example, and not up that ridge and then valley that is delineated there. That for sure today is the way the trail goes, but it's unlikely that's the path of the trail historically. There are some places where because of the freeway, you're not really going to have access to see or you know, walk on the truly historic trail in its genuine location. Too much has happened in the years since. So I just want to point that out. There are places it's great, probably was right there, and places where it certainly wasn't.
Mark, you have your hand up?
I was just wondering, Moreau Road, that's, you know, right above the freeway there and, and the trail, I wonder what, what road or what trailer was there first?
Well, the Moreau Road that you're seeing here, which is basically a divided four-lane road, is a modern road that was created after the Ventura Highway itself. The Ventura Highway, when you think of Moreau Road as it leaves Calabasas Road and crosses the freeway and then goes past that other, that back entrance, some people call it to Hidden Hills. It's even now off this photo to the right, way off the photo a little ways. When that descends past that entrance down into kind of a valley. That's part, that's actually part of the old Ventura Highway.
Oh, wow.
Okay, and then that, when you get kind of that low point, the old Ventura Highway kind of continued directly west, southwest, that would be really kind of under the freeway. It's not on this map, I'm still east of what's shown on this map. And then it would have carried on about from where you are, where the cursor was, Teal just had it then. Then it carried on there, down that way and into this valley. If you even go further south into that green area down in there, somewhere down in there, you can actually find concrete pavement sections that remain exposed that are where the Ventura Highway was.
Wow.
And that old Ventura Highway, as I said before, part, parts of it for sure were just created because that's where the dirt, unimproved road was that happened on top of what was a trail before, right? So much of the Danza Trail became what was the old road, as it were. When freeways were done, wherever they could, they tried to build it to one side or the other so that while they're under construction, the original highway could still move traffic. But in some places, the new divided highways were put exactly on top of the old road. And if the old road was on top of the old trail, well, you really don't have a historic resource at that particular segment or location. That's why I'm saying there are places along here, you can probably be quite certain that's where the trail is and was. But there are other places where that won't be the case. And I would say right along Los Virginas there, that's so heavily modified where they cut into the hill for the interchange and everything else that the trail to have a connection and have a trail that has continuity from trailhead, trailhead, it includes that part there that kind of doglegs to go southwest over to what's now the, what's it? The, was it Claridge? I forget the name of the new hotel there.
Cambria.
Cambria Hotel. That segment is not likely the actual Danza Trail, but it still helps for interpretation purposes and understanding where trails, of course, go from point A to point B. So you don't want it just to end, right? So that's the trail as we know it now, and it still serves for interpretive purposes, even though parts of it are not really likely where it was.
So Tom, if we decided to designate the trail as a historic landmark, we could perhaps even designate a portion of it, maybe not the whole thing, or?
I mean, if we get to that, right? My thinking is you designate that segment from beginning to end to recognize just what I was saying. The trail served a purpose to get from point A to point B. You can still do it today, right? As it's been reshaped to fit this present-day landscape and the various other improvements that exist along there, primarily the freeway. And it would just be noted in the documentation for the designation that there are characteristics that are more genuine and understood to be intact, as it were, although almost really none of it is intact as it would have been at that time, right, in our history. But you can explain it, right, as part of the designation. And to me, you designate the whole thing. Now, obviously, in the future, if you had designated, somebody wanted to, you needed to do some work. The potential impacts from a, would it compromise that resource? It's going to have the potential to be more compromising for sections that are more intact and less so for that, for example, that westernmost segment where it's not as genuine and intact. You know, you deal with those things on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I, I just want to say here that a lot of that trail is, Las Virginies Water has, has a line that goes from the end of Calabasas Road there, you know, all the way through probably that whole trail and off to the water district, the office there. So I don't know if that would make a difference or not.
All those things play a role. There's also, I think, another, maybe a gas pipeline in part of that. And there's also an electrical power line, you can see the power pole in this photo on the right.
Yeah.
That's why I say, I mean, there have been a lot of modern day, if you will, improvements, chiefly right from the 20th century, that have affected this resource that clearly predates all that by several, many generations. So all of that would need to be recognized in the documentation for a designation. And all of those aspects would come into play for any projects that would warrant review under our historical preservation ordinance. All of this, of course, hypothetical, theoretical at this point, because we're talking about an eligible resource at this point. Now, by the way, fact it's eligible means that if there's a project proposed on or near it today, we really should be reviewing it, right? On this, on these bases anyway, right? Even whether it's designated or not. Okay? Now, we haven't had anything. This is basically all this land, if not all of it for sure. But I know at least, let's say, 95% of it is in public hands, primarily the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. So you're not likely to see a project anyway. The resource is basically preserved. Okay?
All right. All right, so let's talk about resurvey. I know that we brought this up in our goals, and there are a few resources that we wanted to discuss. If surveyed or resurveyed, and the survey would so conclude the following properties and structures have the potential to be eligible. These particular ones that I've highlighted are not eligible as of today, according to the survey. That doesn't mean that they could not be, but it does mean that they have not been listed as eligible, according to the survey. Structures that need to be surveyed include the Dry Canyon Cold Creek Cattle Crossing. That is the middle photo there, the little tunnel. Above it is Dry Canyon Cold Creek Road, and the only indication.
Why don't you use your cursor again?
Sorry.
Show that the roadway traverses above it left to right, right?
Yes, so the roadway is above here, and this is Dry Canyon Cold Creek. This spans from one property to another. It goes all the way through underneath this road. At the other end of this tunnel, there is a wall. It's a very small, same material, stone wall, that then makes a hard left turn. This is a cattle crossing. It was designed to tunnel cattle underneath the existing highway or roadway that's above it.
So the, the, the sharp left turn that Teal mentioned on that other side is so that the crossing then ramps back up to the grade so that the cattle is back on top of the property, which at that point is at a higher elevation actually than this property that is behind the photographer, if you will. Now, the Dry Canyon Cold Creek Road, not, not Dry Canyon Cold Creek, there is a creek. This is not, we're talking about the road with the same name, that crosses over this was the original Mulholland Highway. Okay? So Mulholland Highway that you drive today, that it, at the basic vicinity where this is, is roughly 100 yards farther south. And it's a straighter, less curvilinear form, just like I was talking about with the 101 freeway as compared with the original Ventura Freeway. And the old Mulholland Highway is if these different segments of Dry Canyon Cold Creek Road. So if any of you have visited some homes of friends, family, what have you, that exist along some of the off-roads, the little residential roads that stem off of Mulholland Highway between basically the, what's that called, the ranch down there? X, Diamond X or some ranch. From that on the west, all the way east and then up the hill to this location, basically. There are sections of kind of highly twisting roads that you can get to on one end, then it twists around and it'll connect again with Mulholland. Those all have the name of Dry Canyon Cold Creek Road. And if you stitch them all together, you'd pretty much have the old highway for that entire length. This is one of those segments. And the property owner who had a ranch wanted to be able to have the cattle safely cross this busy highway, quote-unquote. Hard to believe it was that busy, but that was the concern, and that's why this was built.
And you actually, when you're driving Dry Canyon Cold Creek Road, you don't know it's there. The only indicator would be a small crack that's appearing in the road above it that would indicate that this structure is underneath it. So it's not exactly easy to see when you're driving the road. But like from the side, this is taken from the lower elevation side. So you can kind of see it's.
Yeah, now, it's not eligible. It's something we would hope we can survey when we can get a, you know, this update survey done. We'd want to add this to the scope of work. Whether we'd be able to, the survey bill find sufficient documentation to verify some of the things I've been saying. That would matter immensely in whether we'd be able to get it deemed eligible. I do want to point out that the roadway itself, which is responsibility of the city to maintain and to keep safe for public use, is failing where it crosses this feature. And so that concern is chief and foremost at the present. But in the meantime, we're hopeful that we'll at least get the survey work done, and we'll see what comes out of that.
Do we know how old the tunnel is? Like maybe when it was built or any, any idea?
We could prob, I mean, for sure that is research that the surveyor could dig up. And I just, I wouldn't. I've done that kind of research before. It's been, how much, 30, 35 years ago? You really have to dig through the records, public records of different things. In this case, what would have been the highway department for the county? More than likely, when the roadway was being constructed and renovated and this work occurred, it was right around the, what they called the Works Public Administration during the Depression, right? That's my best guess from things I've learned about that are similar in different states, other states other than California. Some of the construction techniques, that sort of thing, give me some clues. But I don't have anything that verifies that hunch. It could be earlier than that, but my guess is it's from the early 30s.
All right, so there were a couple of properties from the original survey that will need to be resurveyed. One of which is in the top right-hand corner. This is 4500 Park Granada, this is Lockheed Headquarters, originally constructed in 1986. The survey itself says it needs, it needs to be reevaluated at its 45-year mark. And that it would be considered eligible at that point in time. The same goes for the dome residence here on the bottom photo. Again, built in 1989, the survey does recommend reevaluation at a 45-year mark. And that's it.
Okay, so to sum up, we've got these properties that were surveyed before deemed eligible through that survey. There's been a passage of time sufficient in our mind to warrant resurvey. We even have a couple of properties that Teal just mentioned that at the time of the original survey didn't meet the requirements, but at least were anticipated to have the potential to meet the requirements in the future, and so the recommendation was to resurvey. For the ones already deemed eligible, we believe the resurveying work would be, is appropriate for two reasons. One, it can help identify aspects of those properties as they've changed over time or things that were not identified in the first place that have come to light now that would strengthen our understanding of them and their potentially, the understanding of their historic significance in whatever fashion, so that a nomination and then determination of, of them as an actual designation might be more appropriate today than it would have been immediately following the original survey. Secondly, and this is sort of the flip side, we might learn that one or several of these have been modified in ways that they no longer really meet the requirements for eligibility. So it helps us manage our resources better to do that from time to time. And that's why we believe this should continue to be on our to-do list.
Any questions or concerns?
Some interesting stuff, I think.
So my, my question would be, now that we were looking at these eligible properties, what might be the process over the next year or so to figure out whether or not we want to nominate and then how to go about evaluating it?
Great question. We believe we should get this updated survey done first and then proceed after reporting it to the commission to consider perhaps doing a prioritization for which resources the commission feels are most deserving. Something else that I would invite the commission to consider at such time would be whether any of the identified resources are perceived as threatened. Because whether one is threatened would elevate it to a higher priority because designation and associated efforts that include funding and whatever you need to do to preserve the resource can end up being a priority bit of work. And so all that sort of thing would come forward at that time. That's how I would see it. If we're unable to get the survey update done, then the commission could invite us to bring it to your, take the existing list to you and still go through that process.
Do you have to go to city council to get approval to do the update? Is that the step?
Well, probably depends on whether I can get free work or not. Well, probably depends on whether I can get free work or not. I believe we're going to have to contract for it and, um, we'd have to at least have the council approve as part of a budget funding that includes that specified work. So not necessarily in terms of an act, the work itself, scope-wise and, and contract-wise. Uh, I don't imagine it'd be a lot of money to do it, but so hopefully we'd be able to do it in a simple way that doesn't require having to elaborate everything before the council, but, you know, something the city can and should do. I don't care if we have to go to the council or not, I'll make our case.
Can you try and go to those, uh, schools, universities again to see if you can also get free labor to do this?
Yes, in fact, the timing's actually, that's a good point, pretty good probably because we're concluding a spring semester. So that would mean the, uh, curriculum for the next academic year is going to be prepared in the coming months and, um, it'd be better to get in on the front end so that it could be built into, um, a course, um, what they call it up. It's been so long since I had that, the list of everything you have to do for that semester for the class. Um, then we can get it built in. So, great point. We'll put that, Teal, make a note there.
Note made.
Cause I think I'll probably assign this to you. Cause I wear more than just the historic preservation officer hat in case you guys didn't know that.
Pierce, Pierce College is close by, right? That's.
Yeah, but they don't have a historic preservation program. Or architecture, right? So.
We're looking at this as more of like a senior project capstone course, so.
Or graduate school.
Or graduate school.
Right. So where you have, where you have planning, architecture, that sort of thing. We're going to be, continue to reach out to them. So San Luis Obispo, right cap, they have a program. Um, and then Pomona, I think is the other one. And I think we were, we were in touch with USC before, and actually I was making the best progress to USC last time. So, um, where you find architecture, then you're going to have, uh, uh, architectural history as part of that curriculum and historic preservation is often allied with that. Uh, in some cases, it allied with city planning. Uh, where I went to school, University of Illinois, that's where it was and that's where I got my training. So, um, we just have to, uh, go back in there and look in those universities and see what they're planning on offering to their students. And it really has to be an upper level class. It would be senior for undergraduate and, uh, graduate student level stuff otherwise.
Um, is CSUN a possibility?
I think CSUN is they, because they have a robust, um, planning component. They don't have architecture, but yes.
UCLA does.
That's correct. UCLA has both, I believe. Yep.
We would be reaching out to whoever has those types of programs.
And I, I think we're required to mention UCLA if we mention USC. You know, we have to mention both of them.
We, we are required to mention UCLA if we mention USC. Yes, that is. Okay, we can leave USC off the list and go.
All right now. Madam Chair, can you bring this meeting back to order, please?
Well, it's kind of hard because I have my own alliances there too.
Do we have any other questions for us from the members of the commission?
I have a future agenda item question, but I don't know if we're there yet.
Not quite yet. That's item seven. So we're concluding item five, I believe, Madam Chair.
Yes, I think, I think we, unless anybody has anything else, we'll move on to six, I guess, report.
Okay. I'll try to be brief here. So this year's trainings, um, unlike last year, the state has, um, pulled themselves up by their bootstraps and really put together. They've gotten an awful lot off, uh, offerings now on, uh, via their website in terms of downloadable trainings and that sort of thing. And they're putting on more live stuff, Zoom kind of, you know, webinars. We're going to try to, um, keep you all up to date on what the offerings are. I would also invite each of you to check into their website and some of the others. I think we've given you the links for, uh, the National Trust and some other things. So, um, if you find something that interests you, I would encourage you to, um, inform us, send a note, send an email to me and say, hey, I'm, I'm gonna sign on for this. Because if you found something, first of all, we're going to know that you're intent on training for it and we'll look for you to tell us you did it and then we can log that. But secondly, if you tell us about something, maybe we didn't know about it and we could share it with your colleagues. We don't want you sharing it with one another because of the Brown Act thing. Okay? So just always tell us and then, um, we'll try to keep that going. If we're not making a lot of progress on that and if the commissioners are keen on the idea and ask me nicely, I could put together a third training module, but I'm going to try to avoid that. Only because, um, we got a lot of other work to do around here, but I'm always happy to do that. So that's it on this year's trainings, questions.
Tom, can I, can I ask a question about whether or not this might work for our group? Um, somebody mentioned to me the other day, why don't you guys go look at the Leonis Adobe? And would, could you get, could we get credit as a group if we did a group visit for an hour or whatever?
That's a great idea. Well, we'll check in. I think we probably could, like in instance, and basically do that as a mobile workshop and that's great. We could combine some information that we could provide that would be more contextual relative to historic pres, preservation law. Excuse me. And then of course you got the docents there will give you all the relative information for the Adobe itself, the history, um, that, um, attaches and relates to that. That'd be a great mobile workshop. Okay.
I just want to highlight one more time.
We can look that, you know what we could do is we can look into that and sketch out what could be the, uh, the specific approach and some possible dates and that kind of thing and have it as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great if.
Okay.
Everybody thinks.
Teal, you taking notes?
Yes.
I'm busy thinking.
Over here, dressed, I am feverishly writing.
So, um, Teal already mentioned, I think, or somebody did that we of course have the vacancy. Uh, Councilmember Bazagian who had, um, Judy was his appointee. He will be making his appointment, um, for that vacant position at the next council meeting. Okay? Um, another announcement I want to point out, if, if, uh, the members of the commission were not aware of this, we have a new director of our department. Um, our interim director, um, Don Pemen concluded his, uh, term. Um, and Michael Klein is now our director. He started in that capacity about ten days ago. Something the council did, I don't know, it may have been just the last meeting or two meetings ago. Um, they've, I was going to say they've asked, I think they've more than asked, they've stipulated that no commission meetings are to occur before six o'clock in the evening. And the purpose basically being so the public can participate, presuming of course that most of the adult public have jobs, children, uh, activities, uh, school pickup on and on during the day and into the carrying on for the whole late afternoon. So six PM is earliest. It's not going to affect this commission because I've never known this commission to meet earlier than six, but I am obligated to share that with you. Okay, uh, lastly, I just wanted to inform you that the, the revised housing element update. The city has a general plan, part of which is a mandated housing element that was adopted by the council last week to meet with the state requirements under the Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's been submitted to them for their final review. So hopefully we'll have a, um, that part of our general plan now completed and we'll be focusing on just the safety element and circulation element updates. These aren't things to go to this commission, but I, they're a big project that general plan covers all aspects of city governance, not just what properties are used how. So I just wanted to point you, point that out to you. We do have housing that can be developed and time to time that might be proximate to historic resource. So, um, none of the sites that were identified for the housing element fall into that category. So that's why this commission didn't have any review obligations. But again, I just wanted you to keep you abreast of one of the major efforts of our department. That's, that's the end of my announcements.
I, I think the city sent out a, uh, a questionnaire, a survey on that couple of weeks ago.
Well, more than a couple of weeks, uh, probably a year ago, we did a survey citywide and we also did a senior survey for the housing element update.
Seems like I got something a couple of weeks, maybe it, it wasn't that then.
Okay, so that was the end of mine. So we've got potential future items, Madam Chair.
Yes, so does anybody have any ideas on what we may like?
I do. Um, and my ideas are supplementing what I've seen done already. Uh, and, and when I say that, I really appreciate and enjoy the sites already designated within the city and the plaques I found in walking around and so on. But what occurs to me is that the entire history of our city going back more than two hundred fifty years ago is Native American Indian Tongva, Chumash, whatever. And is there anything, the question, and I have two suggested answers. The question is, is there anything in the city that exists where you could actually recognize those prior inhabitants of our city? And, um, and, and, uh, I'm aware of one which I don't think is appropriate to recognize. And that is that within a block of where we live, when a home was built, uh, too many years ago, there was a grave found. Uh, so, but I don't think we go there in terms of recognizing, but there are two possibilities that occur to me. First of all, within two or three miles of Calabasas's city boundaries, I could show you at least four sites with bedrock mortar holes that were used by Indian peoples over probably hundreds of years. Here's a question and I don't know the answer. Are there any such sites within the boundaries of this city of Calabasas? And it occurs to me there could be, I don't know of them, but we could do a survey to answer that question, yes or no? If the answer were yes, those might be, might be sites where we could recognize Native American Indian peoples having been here before the rest of us. And, and the second idea is this, the really old oak trees in Calabasas were here when nobody was here except Chumash and Tongva peoples. And we could pick perhaps one of those oak trees that are five hundred or more years old. And I know where some of them are, Tom, you probably know where others are and others, you probably know where others are. If we could find one, it could be a site to, to say, this is a tree that was here when nobody other than Chumash and Tongva were here. And we could, we could have a plaque that essentially describes or recognizes that history just in association with that tree. You know, it occurs to me, one of them that is that old probably is right down in Old Town in that sort of plaza area. That big, big oak tree, uh, not on the Leonis Adobe side of the street, but on the other side of the street. One that probably is in a private yard and I don't know if it would be appropriate for this kind of recognition, but literally within one house of me, there's a house, a tree that has to go back over five hundred years. So those are my two ideas. Should we do a survey and see if we have any bedrock mortar holes within Calabasas? Or should we consider using a very old oak tree to recognize Chumash Tongva presence?
Before the commissioners discuss whether to have either of these items on a future agenda, I'd like to make two comments about. Make some comments on both ideas. The first is one idea number one, which is, um, what, what falls in the category of archaeological and cultural resources. In place, resources like that, um, the protocol is to protect in place by not divulging the information. So experts such as yourself, um, are knowledgeable and are relied upon to protect the resource by sort of, I'll, I'll call it keeping the secret. And the reason is that if it starts becoming in the public knowledge realm, you risk damage to the resource through vandalization, theft, all those sorts of things. So, um, in California law, under the California Environmental Quality Act, we're already obligated to protect those resources from development. And it is done within the framework I just summarized, so it's to protect the resources from damage due to unfortunate things. So I would recommend that not be something the commission would take on. Now, the second idea would be, first of all, perhaps a nice way to, in a not to, uh, in an esoteric, I guess for lack of a better word, fashion, sort of accomplish what you're saying in the first idea. You can message wise convey that together with the fact that you have a living thing that trend, that has a life that encompasses that area as well as the present day. And of course it clearly recognized the value of that, um, living thing itself. You brought up an example that is perhaps one of the best. It would be reasonable to consider others besides that one, but you mentioned the one in the plaza across from Leonis Adobe. What many of you may not know is the Association for the Adobe, they own the property you're talking about, across the street. They own that. So they might be very favorable to something like that on that property. That might be quite achievable and then procedurally, because of course, an oak um, recognized in that fashion and taken on by this group as something, a consideration and a quote designation would not fall within the parameters of historic preservation as outlined for you as a CLG and as an agent of the state and the federal government for purposes of historic preservation. The oak tree itself would not fall into the category of one of the, of a resource. It's a natural resource. It's already protected under the city's oak tree ordinance and guidelines. And again, also by CEQA. However, this commission wears another hat as the Old Town Coalition. And, um, Commissioner Human, if I have not made that clear to you as part of orientation, I apologize. But as the Old Town Coalition, now revisiting this one oak tree idea that you had, that's within Old Town, that perhaps would be a terrific thing for the coalition, wearing those hats to accomplish. Now, the commission, when you're wearing that hat, could recognize it, but you wouldn't designate it officially as a landmark. So those are my comments on both ideas. Great ideas.
And, and I appreciate your comments and on both of my ideas. I think they're both appropriate. Uh, so with the, with the oak tree idea, the idea would be to use that as sort of a place in which you could have a plaque that does recognize and describe in a few sentences, the prior occupation of these lands we live in.
Um, I might point out that the, um, Headwaters Corner property might be another place to do a little, um, investigation and perhaps there would be a opportunity there. But this could be, you know, your suggestion is a future agenda item for more discussion. Now's not the time to discuss it. I did want to make my comments so that we could set it, if, if the group wants to put it on agenda, we'll put it on there in the appropriate context. Madam Chair?
So do we have to make a motion about putting it on the agenda?
No, you just want to see if there's enough of this and not too much of that.
Okay, so let's decide whether or not to put the oak tree issue on the agenda for the next meeting?
For a discussion.
For discussion in next meeting or future meeting.
Got some consensus, yea or nay?
Anybody, yeah.
I'd be interested in that, yes.
I would too.
Okay, so that'll be something we'll tee up for a discussion item and then. Okay, so that'll be something we'll tee up for a discussion item in the next meeting. Any other items?
And, and I would like to, like, go back to the Masson House Headwaters Corner, like, see how that all fits together and, and maybe have a short presentation on what the plans are and how they might benefit each other.
We'll give you an update of what we know of where that process is going and what their, um, schedule is, that sort of thing. If we're able to ideally, I'd be able to maybe have Michael McConville um, join the meeting and he can give it to you directly.
That'd be great.
Okay. Everybody, am I getting more of these?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. And then we'll update you if there's stuff on training, that sort of thing. Um, we can do that as well. We, we try to make sure that's going on. And that would, that should do it.
I, I have another question. We have, I know there's adjournment, but beyond adjournment on the agenda page, it talks about seven PM for the next meeting, which is July sixth. Had we decided maybe to move these meetings to six?
Yeah, this comes up from time to time. So everybody keep your ears wide open so that I don't have to repeat myself for another year. In the Calabasas Municipal Code, it says in black and white that this commission meets quarterly. And it says, like, the first Wednesday of every three months, January, April, et cetera, at seven o'clock PM. Okay? So when you have an adjournment to the regular, and you'll notice the fourth word in that is the word regular, that means it has to be a meeting at seven o'clock PM. Now, that's why it always says that and we'll continue to say that on your agenda sheets. This commission always has the ability to set its own meeting time and date as a special meeting. And then we notice it as a special meeting. This is an obligation we have under the rules that others have made for us. And so if this group prefers to continue to meet at six o'clock, which has been our usual thing lately, then we can adjourn to this, but then we'll agendize a meeting as a special meeting at six o'clock.
Okay, do we need to get some?
I would prefer you do it this way now because you're going to have a new member shortly.
Yes.
And what we can do is pull the delegation when we get closer to this day. And, you know, a month away or whatever it is. And then when we do the notice, it'll be noticed as a special meeting starting six.
Perfect.
Okay.
That works for me. So I guess I should ask if there's anything else we need to discuss before we adjourn or anybody? And, and then I have to go back and say, thank you for all the excellent meetings you held and I'll try to do my best going forward.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, be sure you let us know early whenever you think you, or know you're not going to go make a meeting and chair it.
Okay.
And I invite you to make sure your vice chair
And then Miss Mark.
Is informed accordingly because, uh, Mark, that means you're going to be running the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
All right, we adjourned. Is that right? Very good. Thank you all.
Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.
Night.
Along.